Welcome everybody to the June meeting of the Laconia zoning board of adjustment. And with that, I have a little short paragraph, three pages long, that I have to read. This meeting will be held in person in the noticed meeting room. In conformance to the New Hampshire RSA 91-8, a form of the board's members must be physically present in the meeting room for the meeting to start and/or continue. The public can choose to attend and participate in person or by Zoom. If someone occurs, if something occurs that disables access to Zoom, the meeting will continue regardless and members of the public or board members using Zoom will have no recourse. Choosing to use Zoom is done at the individual's risk. Using Zoom requires the use of an embedded device. Please use the link below to access the meeting. That would be us02web.zoom.us backslash J backslash eight nine two three one five six eight nine two five and entering the web ID. Web ID is eight nine two three one five six eight nine two five. Listen only, call 1-646-558-8656, Using this option only allows you to listen to the meeting with no opportunity to participate. To view this meeting, youtube under the city of Laconia, youtube.com backslash Laconia, New Hampshire. Due to technical difficulties, we're temporarily suspending live transmission of the city's meeting on channel 26. There are incompatibilities between Zoom, virtual meeting platform and the Atlantic broadband platform. Okay, with that, call to order.
Calling at 6:38 and you're looking for a roll call?
Roll call.
Steve Bogert.
Here.
Marsha Hayward.
Here.
Gail Ober.
Here.
Roland Mayhew.
Here.
Jane LaRoche.
Here.
Mike Foot.
Here.
And Mike Delavecchia will be late with notification.
Okay. So, as I do a survey, we have four. Marsha, did I do it?
What about Jane has never had a chance to participate?
Do you feel up to wanting to participate? And vote? Why?
I didn't.
Actually, I let Marsha because I've been, I was in the hospital a little bit this past week, so I'm a little behind in reading as much as I would like to.
And I did pronounce it right this time?
Yes, you did.
Okay, thank you.
Practice, practice.
Thank you, thank you, Marsha.
Keep practicing. Okay, so you will be on each application until Mike shows up.
Correct.
And if he shows up in the middle of an application, you will continue through that application.
Understood, yes.
All right. With that, we'll move to the next. Is the acceptance of the minutes from the previous meeting. Everybody have an opportunity to review the minutes.
Yep.
With that being said, does anybody have any changes, additions, subtractions, corrections?
I move the minutes to be accepted as written.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second discussion. There being none, all those in favor, we can do it since we're all here with a hand raise. Okay. Next on the agenda is going to be continuance items. Nope, extensions. And the first one is 6.1 is zoning 2019-0021 extension, Endicott Street East extension request.
They should be, yes. And then maybe also Clark Fenner may also be there.
Eastman Shore.
Endicott Street East.
Endicott?
Michael Redding and Clark Fenner.
Good evening, folks. Please introduce yourself for the records and tell us how we can help you.
Good evening. Thank you very much, the board, for hearing us tonight. I'm Clark Fenner, the president and CEO of New England Solar Garden. And with me, I've got Michael Redding, who is our vice president of engineering.
Good evening.
What we'd like to do is talk to you about an extension request on the lease agreement that we have with the city of Laconia for the solar project on the Laconia closed landfill. We received some very positive news today, which finally gets us over the hump, which has dragged on for the last couple of years, waiting for a, waiting for the ability to sell the power from the, from the project. The Senate Conference Committee today voted to accept House Bill 315, which allows for the expansion of projects from 1 megawatt to 5 megawatts, both through the community choice aggregation structure for selling the power, also through the municipal net metering of the power. So in either case, depending on whether or not the city of Laconia would like to participate in the purchase of the power from the project, we are confident now that we can sell that power for the full, I believe, Michael, 2.97 megawatts AC of capacity that can be built on that landfill. And we are now prepared to move forward.
Therefore, we're requesting an extension for our special exception application or approval for the final plans to be extended to September of 2021 and the completion of the project for a year extension, which would be August 3, 2022.
All right. Does anybody on the board have any questions? Since this is an extension, I don't have to open it up to the public. Any questions?
I'm familiar with it.
Yeah, I mean, I'll make the motion. I just would ask if I could ask the, ask the applicant to restate the dates that you want your extension to. I didn't, I didn't quite catch them and I don't see them on the application.
Right here.
And they?
Certainly. So we're requesting the mylar and/or final plans be extended from September 2019 to September of 2021, and then the completion of the project from August 3, 2021. I believe we can only do one year, so it'd be August 3, 2022.
Okay, I make a motion that we grant an extension to.
Does that, pardon me, just for a second. All extensions are only six months.
Yeah, so your, your extensions are six months. It will be till the December 30 of 2021.
And as long as they start construction before that date.
Right.
Then they wouldn't need any additional.
It's not a completion date, it's just a start.
Right, that you would, they would not need any additional extensions from zoning. They, they have extensions that they've got to go get from planning as well, but.
Right, those are not being talked about tonight. It's only the zoning part, which is the six months, and you understand, right?
I do, yes.
Okay. Okay, so I'm sorry, Karen, what's my date again?
December 30, 2021, the six-month extension.
Okay, I make a motion that we extend the application, or we grant the extension on application Z02019-0021, text map 18772-7 on Endicott Street East to extend the start date from August 3, 2020, or whenever the date was, to December 30, 2021.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second discussion. There being none, all those in favor of the motion. Okay. It passes, enjoy your extension.
Thank you very much.
luck with your project.
Thank you, we look forward to it.
All right, as we move on, the next application is 2021-0005 variance, 57 Eastman Road has requested a continuance to the next meeting. This is their third request for the record, so the applicant's been informed.
Yeah, he sent a letter, correct?
Yep.
Yeah. Well, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we extend variance request for 57 Eastman Road to our August meeting. He wanted one month? I mean, I'm sorry, to our July meeting?
Yes, yes, one month.
One month was going to be enough? Okay. Till our July meeting.
All right, we have motion.
I'll second that.
We have a second discussion. There being none, all those in favor. Let the record indicate, motion passed, 5-0. Next application is 33 Clearwater Place. It's a special exception for short-term lodging. We've also have a request here that they continue to the next meeting as they changed attorneys, and so that gives the new attorney an opportunity to get on board, come up to speak. Looking for a motion to continue to the next meeting?
I'll make a motion to continue this, this Clearwater, correct?
Yes.
to our next July meeting.
We have a motion. Second? Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. There being none, all those in favor?
I'm against, I'm against the continuation.
All righty. Was there something you wanted to discuss there that we don't know?
Very good.
I didn't want to just bypass that by.
No, if I wanted to, Steve, it's me, if I'd wanted to say something, I would have.
There you go.
That's fine.
Okay, the next one is 2021-0022. It's a variance for 44 Indian Path. Applicant is requesting a variance from Article 4, Section 235-19 to allow for the installation of a covered pavilion, expanded steps and relocated hot tub. If the applicant is here, please introduce yourself for the record and tell us how we can help you.
Hi, my name's Paul Cady. I'm a landscape architect with Stevens Landscaping. I'm representing Steven and Alicia Evans. We're here. We're at 44 Indian Path. I brought some other materials. I know you guys have seen the plan and you've seen our application. I have some images of the site, if you'd like to see it, and some other plans for what we're planning on doing. What we're trying to do is work within the constraints of a property that's rather limited, most of it's in the 50-foot. So anything, more or less anything that we do on this property is going to require some kind of relief from the board. So we're trying to work with what's already there and the impervious that's already there and make the house safer and more user-friendly for the clients. I can show you some images from the site. I don't know what you guys want to see, if you have any questions, what you'd like to see.
I have a question, but if you want to make your present, my only question is a real simple one.
Sure.
Did I make a note of? Are you removing any additional trees?
We weren't planning on it.
Okay, thank you.
No, please go ahead and continue.
Okay. Well, I brought some images of the site, so you can kind of see where we're working and what we're doing. If you haven't been on the site before, it's right at the end of Indian Path. And what we're trying to do is there's this existing patio here and existing hot tub and an existing temporary structure. So what we want to do is make a permanent structure where the existing one is, so we're not increasing the impervious count, and then move the hot tub back and expand these steps over here. So that's what we're asking for relief from the board for. We're going to leave the rest of it as open space, so we're not touching anything else. And then the driveway is already existing on the other side, so we're not adding in another driveway, and we're not expanding the house beyond its existing footprint.
Now, does any of this need to be approved by the state?
Yes. So we were getting hopeful to get conditional approval for you guys, and then we're going to send it to the protection, through the shoreline stuff and the wetland stuff to the state.
Okay, because usually we don't approve things without the state, so it's kind of a catch-22.
Yeah.
So within the motion, it's going to be embedded if there's not an, if there is a motion for approval, part of that approval, I'll tell you upfront, is going to be having condition that the state approves it also, so that makes it go through the permitting process with the state.
That's fine.
And then if the state doesn't give you the permit, then this approval would be null and void.
Sounds like it.
So, okay. Any other questions of the applicant?
Maybe it's just me today having brain feed. What is usually are the state policy for setback from shoreline, for shoreline protection?
250 feet.
250 feet.
Most of the state.
Almost entirely, I mean, it's definitely within the 250 and most of it's within the 50. So we're trying to be as ecologically.
And even some of it, the corner of this patio, makes it way inside of the 30.
The 20?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're not, we're not proposing any changes within the 20. It would be between the 20 and the 50. And we're also planning on converting some of the impervious area that's existing into pervious area to reduce our coverage.
Okay, so you're basically reducing the, and you're, what you're trying to do is reconfigure this as well as we can re-reduce the encroachment into the shoreline. Is that a fair assessment? Meaning the, the volume of the encroachment?
We're not trying to increase more into the shoreline. So we're trying to use what we already have on the site and utilize that in a way so that we're not further damaging.
Yeah, okay, because it says under your unnecessary hardship, number one, it says we are reducing total coverage.
Yep, total site coverage.
Total site coverage?
Yeah.
But not total coverage within, not, not the amount of the encroachment into the shoreline?
I believe that actually we are reducing that too. So we're proposing, it is an increase in impervious structure, water access structures, but it's within the allowed amount with the state. So it, yeah, it's within the allowed amount within the state. So we're working within your rules and the state's rules.
I understand.
To.
So you're reducing, you're not reducing just total coverage on the lot?
We're reducing the total coverage on the lot, yes. Within the 250 feet of the shoreline.
Within the 250?
Within the 250, yeah.
You don't have a problem with the railroad?
Not yet. Hopefully not. They were very friendly when I talked to them, so. And they like the Yeti that they have posted next to the railroad.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time? There being none, what I'd like to do is go ahead and open it up to the public and ask if anybody, you may have a seat for a minute, and then we're going to bring you back up.
Okay.
And if anybody from the public or out in Zoom land would like to have a comment, in Zoom land, just wiggle your hand and give us an opportunity to find you and bring you on board. And if you hear it in the public, just mosey on up to the podium and let the record indicate, no one from Zoom or no one in the public audience wish to speak for or against this application. Therefore, I'll bring it back to the board. Any further questions? Any closing comments?
Nope. I appreciate working with you all, and we're looking to make Laconia and the lake safer, healthier, and ecologically more friendly place.
I'm sorry, I was responding, she wanted me to do, Karen wanted me to do something. Is, is the dock already there?
The dock is existing, yes.
The dock? The dock exists, okay.
Yep.
There's a lot of building going on down there. It really surprises me how much there is.
I'm sorry?
There's a lot of building going on down there in that section where you are.
In that area, yeah. It's, there's a lot of building going around all over the lake, so it's been very, very busy.
Even at the beginning of building your road.
Oh, yeah. Lots of changes happening.
There's no other closing comment? One last opportunity. With that, I'm going to close it to the public. You may have a seat. Bring it to the board for discussion.
I would definitely feel it should be predicated on acceptance by the state DES or anything like that. Certainly would feel that's reasonable.
My only condition is, and I'm going to word this into the motion.
Okay.
That I've written is that there are no additional trees removed.
Okay, go ahead. Would you like to make a motion then, Gail?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the variance requesting a covered pavilion, expanded steps and a relocated hot tub zoning application 02021-0022, lot number 10180516-17 at 44 Indian Path Road. That we grant the variance, provided that no additional trees are removed and that a shoreline protection act with the state of New Hampshire is obtained and placed on file. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest as it is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. Granting the variance will not adversely affect the spirit of the ordinance because it would not alter the basic zoning objectives of RSA, of our ordinance 235-19. It will not also not adversely affect the essential character of the neighborhood, imposes no threat to the public health, safety or welfare. Denying the variance would not provide any benefit to the general public that outweighs the benefit to the applicant. Additionally, substantial justice is done because the reconstruction and relocation of the pavilion with the additional steps and a hot tub will reduce, I, I thought it would reduce the current encroachment on the shoreline. However, it will reduce the, the overall.
Non-pervious.
surface.
Or increase the pervious.
Or whatever. And it will, it will reduce the overall surface.
I'm going to give you writer's cramp.
I've got it written, so I'll give this to you. No, I have it written out, so I'll be able to give this to you. So it'll reduce the overall non-pervious surface of the lot. The granting of the variance has no deleterious effect on the surrounding neighborhood in terms of property values. And the hardship is that there is no fair and substantial relationship between the general public purposes of the ordinance and the request, and it is reasonable.
We have a motion, folks, with conditions. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second discussion of the motion. There being none, all those in, I'm going to give Gail a chance. All those in favor of the motion?
Right.
Okay.
Make sure I wrote out those conditions, please, Karen. Okay, thanks.
I'll mail you or email you a copy of the notice of action, which will outline the conditions.
Thank you so much. Have a great day.
She was prepared.
Yeah, well, that was the only one I got to, so you're on your own. Now you, now you're winging it, Steve. I tried to write out as many as I could, but I just ran out of time and I apologize for that.
Okay, the next application is 2021-0023 variance, 228 Pogus Park Road. Applicant is requesting a variance from Article 6, Section 235-35A, front setback to allow for a replacement of a non-conforming residential structure with attached garage with a more conforming residential structure with attached garage and deck. Would applicant please come forward? Introduce yourself for the record.
Chairman and zoning board members, Steve Smith of Steve Smith and Associates, now a division of Du Bois and King. I might be back here one more time, but I think that might be it after.
Just going to say, Steve, I thought you retired.
Well, I thought I did too, but it didn't work that way.
Ah, you make so much work, because you, you take away so much of the work for us.
Well, hopefully Du Bois and King will pick it up and, and take care of it, we hope. I'm here tonight representing the Tabajis. They have a piece of property at 228 Pogus Park Road in the residential single-family zone and also the shoreline overlay district. I've provided you with an existing conditions plan, a proposed improvements plan, the application with our support for the, I think there's five categories under the support for the variance. We are here, we have our New Hampshire DES shoreline permit in place. We have received that. We are here seeking a variance to Article 6, Section 235-35A, the front setback of this property. If you look at your existing conditions plan, there is an existing house on this property. There is a shed, there is an attached garage with an attached deck. And currently, the entire garage is in the front setback. It's only at one corner, 2.65 feet from the boundary line of the front road setback or the property line, and on the other side, 3.34 feet to the property line in the front. The entire garage is in the setback part of the covered part of the deck, and the entryway is in the setback. And the shed, probably 80% of the shed is in the setback. And a portion of the deck and paved walkways, pavers is in the 50-foot waterfront buffer. Our proposal on our proposed improvements plan was to come up with a layout that would make this property, even though we can't make it totally conforming, more conforming than it is today. A little history on the property. This, this property was developed way back in the 40s, 1944, I think was the first development down there of lots along the lake. So this property happens to be a pre-existing, non-conforming lot. In this particular zone, you're required, they have one. In this particular zone, you're required, they have one, they have municipal sewer and they have an on-site well. So under this zone, they would be required today to have a lot that's 40,000 square feet. So they only have a lot that's a little over 12,000 square feet. They would be required to have 100 feet of frontage. The lot's only 88 feet wide, little over 88 feet wide. And the rear setback, which is actually the lake, under the zoning is 15 feet. But because it's on the lake, it's got the 50-foot buffer, which is basically a setback under the state and under the town's ordinance. So that impacts the property even greater. It actually takes about 2,500 square feet of what normally would be buildable land area out of that already small lot of roughly 12,500 square feet. So our approach to this was to prioritize the areas that we felt were the most important on the lot and develop a new site plan for the house that would be more conforming. In our approach to this, we felt that both the sideline setbacks, because they're directly, we have abutters with uses on the property, and they're only 10 feet to start with. And the waterfront buffer were the most important aspects on this lot. So that has forced us to move the, the building back, keep the deck, keep everything out of the shoreline zone itself. And it pushes the garage and part of the house into the setback so that we now would have setbacks along the road of, on the, what would be the south side of the property from the road. There would be 17 feet. In the middle of the property, it would be 15.959 feet setback. And at the northerly end of the property along the road, there would be 18.55 feet from the property line, considerably expanding that property, that, that building, or moving it back substantially from the, the three feet and the two and a half feet that the current garage sets in. What the other thing that it does, it allows, I, I think most of you are familiar with the Pogus Park area. I've been in here on several occasions. I have a lot, just two lots down from here that had a garage that was similar. It was almost right on the boundary line. And, and because of the lot being narrow, because of the buffers, because of the lot not having anywhere as near what would be required under today's standards to keep the, the, the building out of the shoreline, we still had to have part of the garage, a new garage in the setback. But we made it substantially, a substantial improvement in doing that. And that's been our approach with this piece of property. In addition to minimizing the impacts, the real impact is really, if you, the impact that we have would be the front impact on the road, but that's substantially better than what it is today. And what it also gives us is the ability for the people who live here to not only be able to put their vehicle in the garage and get it in there, make a turn to get in there, but it gives them a couple of parking spaces out on their property so they aren't parking out on Pogus Park Road, like many of them have to do because of the size of the lot. So basically, we feel that we are eliminating most of the non-conformance of the property, making it better, protecting the waterfront. Additional to that is we're providing stormwater treatment for roof water, catchments around the, the house that don't, don't take place today. There's no stormwater treatment, can run right into the lake. And we're using porous technologies also to recharge the groundwater and protect the lake. So all in all, I think this protects the abutters that are immediately beside on both sides of them. It maintains that proper side setback. It protects the lake. One of the most important things that we have here is the lake, obviously. We are a lakes region. So it provides that protection. And it's for that reason that we were able to, you know, get our approval from the shoreline and move forward with this. So we would ask the, the board for relief. I can read all five of those questions if you'd like me to read them. I've spelled out the basis of those and the hardship. And really, to us, the hardship here is the fact that this is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. It's about, it's almost like less than one-third the size of a normal lot in this zone. Coupled with the fact that it isn't as wide as the lot should be under the zoning and the fact that we have to take another 35 feet out of what would be the rear setback because it's abutting the lake, it reduces the buildable land area even more. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions with the board or do whatever you'd like to do.
Yeah, any chance you're gonna plant any trees out there?
I'm sure they will do some, some landscaping that we have. If you look at the plan, there's an area that we can't touch.
Right.
That's all trees.
Okay.
And that's been preserved, and that's under the state approval. And that would be this, that would be all these trees in here.
Oh, alright.
Which is basically the only trees that are there.
And that's part of the state approval.
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
Steve, I noticed the shed is gonna be also removed.
It's gonna be eliminated. That's why we can meet those side setbacks. That's correct.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions at this time? Out of the way. You're on this one.
Well, I hate to steal Marcia's spot.
You remember the board?
Huh? Since I came late.
Well, it was because of a new application. Okay, I, I told her if you walked in in the middle of an application, she would stay. And then if you came in, you would pick up on the next. I failed to mention that to you. I do apologize. So any other questions at the moment?
No, it's a great plan.
There being none, I'd like to open it up to the public and to Zoom land and ask if anybody would like to speak for or against this application, please, and Zoom land, wiggle your, toggle your hand, and out in the public, just come on up and Let the record indicate no one from the Zoom portion and no one from the public here wish to speak for or against this application. Therefore, I bring it back to the board for any further questions. There being none, I'd like to, any closing comments? Let the record indicate the applicant had no closing comments. With that, close it to the public, bring it to the board for discussion.
It's a good plan. I mean, there's not much else. It's an improvement over what there is. These lots are unworkable. You know, I mean, they were camps that have morphed into something else. It's the best thinking we can expect
Yep.
from the lot, and it's a significant improvement probably over what's there now. So I, I have nothing.
Looks positive.
Use of impervious
driveways.
Driveways, sure.
And it has the filtration system, which you like to see in your plans. So they seem to have caught all the hot buttons.
And it does, it sets it back from the lake. Plus.
Yes, and they got the permit from the state already, which is a plus. Anything else? There being none, like to entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve. Application Z02021-0023, a variance for 228 Pogus Park Road, tax map number 300-178-10. I also, in that motion, recommend that we submit the application as presented rather than me reading through all of this, if that's, if I can get a second.
You got a second.
At this point, we're, why, we're gonna miss you, Steve.
Sorry, but 48 years is enough.
You're wait, I'm not, nobody, you're not getting any argument from us, but.
You don't wanna round up to 50.
You don't wanna, you don't wanna, you don't wanna start a little school on how to appear in front of a zoning board, do you?
No.
So we have a motion, we have a second.
I don't know.
Okay, you were the second, okay.
Yeah, cuz I was gonna make the same exact motion.
Oh, okay, yeah. There's no reason for me to try to rework this.
No, it's complete. So any further discussion of the motion? There being none, all those in favor of the motion?
Alright.
Okay, passes. Thank you, Steve.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Could you ask one of the alternates to sit in on just the next hearing? I have to run out to my car. I, I don't have any. I, I think my reading glasses are in the car.
Okay.
In other words, I can't see. So I don't wanna hold up the meeting, so one of our two alternates, just nominate someone to sit in on the next hearing. And I'll be back there.
Marcia, so shall you join us again?
Most certainly.
We appreciate it. Okay, next on the agenda, or the next item is 2021-0024. It's a variance for 99 MacGarth Street. The applicant is requesting a variance from Article 4, Section 235-35B, side and rear setbacks to allow for the construction of a dormer on the north side of the home. The applicant is here. Please come forward, introduce yourself for the record.
Good evening. Ryan Dixon, homeowner and resident at 99 MacGarth Street. As shown in my application, I'm interested in constructing a 36-foot-long dormer on the north side of my home. The home predates current zoning, so it's non-conforming now. The north side lot line is within 10 feet of the neighbor to the north side. The dormer construction is simply to increase living space. It will add living space to the attic of the home for my growing family. I have spoken to the neighbors on the north side, and they're, they have absolutely no problem with it whatsoever. So I'm open to any questions from you folks.
So it will not exceed the backside of the house?
It will not be increasing the footprint at all. It will not be increasing the height of the home at all.
Okay, cuz I noticed from the pictures, the diagrams, it's gonna be lower than the ridge of the roof?
That's correct, yes. It'll be, it'll be about a two-pitch roof coming down from the existing ridge line.
You're gonna have some exciting winters. I have about a two-pitch.
I'm aware. I'm a home builder by trade, so I know all about it.
The ice comes down and it curls over, and you end up with this. And then when it finally falls, oh, it's quite exhilarating. Especially if it chooses to do that in the middle of the night.
Absolutely.
Just out of curiosity, it has no bearing on it whatsoever, but I'm always curious. What type of roof are you gonna put on it?
It will be fully ice and water shielded, and I'm gonna do a traditional screw-down metal roof.
See, I got a rubber roof, and that's why I have that. Yours will probably come off a lot.
A little bit better, yeah.
Yeah, slide off a lot faster and slower. Well, it won't have the buildup, so.
Right.
That's why I was curious.
It's still exhilarating when it comes out.
Yes.
We own the home next door, which is also a metal roof, and when that slides, boy, it slides.
Okay, any questions of the applicant? There being none, I'm gonna open up. You may have a seat for a second.
Thank you.
Don't go too far. I'm gonna open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. And also from Zoom land, if anybody has any thoughts on it, please wiggle your little hand on there and give us a moment. Let the record indicate no one from Zoom wish to speak for or against this application. And also from the public, no one wishes to speak for or against this application. Therefore, I bring it back to the board.
To me, it looks reasonable. It's not.
For questions?
Sorry.
It's quite alright. There being none, any closing comments?
No, just thank you for your time.
Very good. You may have a seat. I'm gonna close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion. Now, Michael.
It seems a reasonable expansion of the property in that it's not impacting any. It's not expanding the footprint of the building at all, and it's utilizing an ability, and it's not raising the height of the building either. I think it's reasonable to utilize some extra living space in some of these older buildings.
I do have a question. I noticed a chimney on this house. Would that have to go before the fire department for inspection or anything? Because I'm sure something's gonna have to be done if it's existing.
When they put in for the building permit, the fire department is on the review. You're correct. There may be a need to extend the chimney a little bit higher just to clear the roof.
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not sure what the distance is supposed to be, but they, they certainly will review that when they, when they do the building permit.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Any other discussion?
Good eye.
There's no other discussion? Like to entertain a motion?
I'll entertain a motion that we, we accept this application, 2021-0024 variance from side and rear setbacks for the expansion of the building envelope by creating a dormer that will not further impact the setbacks as they are.
Shouldn't exceed the footprint.
Shouldn't exceed the footprint. So we're looking for variance from Article 6, Section 235-35 and the setback within a setback, 10-foot setback from neighboring property. We can see that the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. You know, it would increase the usability and value of the home, probably an opportunity to update some of the building also. A spirit of ordinance would be observed. We're not making a more non-conforming property here and still allowing the property owner to benefit from upgrading the home. The variance would do substantial justice in that it will no further impact the general public or the neighborhood and once again, give the advantage of increased living space in the home. The if the variance is granted, we would not diminish the, I cannot see that we'd diminish the neighboring properties, certainly once again, an upgrade on the home. The, is not going negatively impact anybody there, and it is a reasonable use of a property previously, already non-conforming, so.
Okay, we have motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Michael seconds, Michael's motion. I gotta, I can't help it. Any discussion of the motion? There being none, all those in favor of the motion?
Right.
Aye. All right. It passes five zero, enjoy your dormer.
Thank you, folks, very much.
You back with us, Gil?
I am, thank you for your indulgence, thank you, Marcia. Helps when I can see, just a little.
So the next application, wow, we're zooming right along. Okay, it's twenty twenty one dash zero zero two five variance. One two six Clinton Street, applicant is requesting a variance from Article Two, Section two thirty five dash twenty eight. Use is not permitted to allow for the housing of agricultural animals. If the applicant.
Is via Zoom.
Okay, applicant is via Zoom, so we'll take a second and give him the opportunity. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you, sir?
Good. So tell us, introduce yourself for the record and tell us how we may help you.
I'm Julian Fallon.
And I'm Dan Fallon, and we are looking to get a couple of miniature goats to keep as pets. And so that's why we're here.
And a couple of ducks, so we need a variance for that.
All right. Give everybody a second here to. That's a nice size partial, it looks like you have.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, almost ten acres.
Anybody have any questions?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, have you spoken to your neighbors to see how they'll receive the animals in your yard?
Yes, yeah, they are excited about it.
So you plan on doing like a ten by ten shed with a ten by ten fence to keep the goats in?
That's what we're thinking.
Standing here.
Yes.
Are you gonna milk the goats, are you gonna eat the goats, what kind of farmer are we talking?
We're gonna snuggle the goats.
Yeah, they, they are very small. It's gonna be kept as pets, but not milked or anything like that. They might eat some poison ivy, though, that's what one of my neighbors is excited about the prospect of, I don't know if that's a real thing, that's what he said is, he's looking forward to that.
What is the zone of this?
Residential general.
It's what?
Residential general.
RG. How close is your closest neighbor?
Um, I guess that would be Darren. About two hundred and fifty feet. Actually, house to house, maybe two hundred feet.
How do you feel about chickens?
Um, I don't want to have any chickens.
Guinea hens?
Uh, no guinea hens either.
Or peacocks?
No roosters.
Real, alright.
So it's just for the goats that you're looking?
And didn't they say ducks?
Then possibly ducks.
Geese?
No.
Don't ducks live in water?
They do, and they are fairly foul, no pun intended. But having kept them myself before, you find that stuff like that readily impacts unless you have readily access flowing water and a way to mitigate the.
Cuz I don't see any water.
We've got a stream running through the property, it bisects our property.
But we wouldn't want to put the animals in where we're gonna poop in the stream and carry that downstream.
I was, I was hoping to compost their waste and to run, to siphon off, get a little pool for them and siphon off the pool water into the woods that's far away from where everybody else will be, kind of.
You, you, you would be altering a wetland, you would need a whole special permit for that.
Uh, that's on an opposite side.
I'm sorry, what? I, I just didn't hear you.
Our yard is, I think our yard is about two acres, so I was hoping to put all the animals on the opposite side of the stream and use the stream as a water source, basically.
You would still be altering a wetland. If any diversion of any kind of river stream, um, anything like that is considered an alteration of wetlands, you would need an alteration of wetlands permit in order to do that. There's nothing in this application that indicates that you're going to do that. It's not.
It'd be, it'd be actually nowhere near the stream, it'd be on the opposite side.
Before we go any further, I have a question.
Sure.
I went up the other day and took a look at that place, and I, I think that they can do, could do what they want to do up there, my problem has nothing to do with that, my problem is with the table of land use. According to the table of land use, an RG zone, that agricultural animals is just not allowed. How do we get around something like that?
Well, then, only by special exception.
No, by variance.
By variance?
Remember the chickens?
Oh, the chickens.
Rooster, the rooster.
Rooster, cobbler.
I had them insured.
So.
Yes.
I mean, does it? I, I have no further questions of the applicant at this time.
Okay.
I think I understand what it is that they want to do, I also don't believe that they can divert anything in that stream to put it anywhere, I don't care whether it's across the street.
Oh, we don't have to, we don't have to use the stream as a water source, we could just use the hose, if that would.
Measure of a permit, first of all, it's just an alteration of wetlands permit, it's nothing that, you know, it's just not part of this application, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Before we go further, do I have my question answered?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
To clarify to Mr. Mayhew.
What's that?
To clarify, to answer your question.
Yes.
That the use is not permitted, that is why they're requesting a variance from a non-permitted use. That two thirty five twenty eight is, use is not permitted on the, on the table, they're requesting a variance from that to allow the agricultural animals. That's the reason for the variance. I hope that makes.
Can I just clarify one, once more, that the animals would be on a very far away from, actually the opposite side of the yard from the water, and if it's a problem using the water from the stream for the ducks, we could just use the hose.
Yeah, that's fine.
And run the hose, we have a very long hose, that, it would be on the opposite side, so it'd actually be nowhere near the stream that we were gonna house them.
Is there a particular number of goats and ducks we're talking about?
Four goats and two duck, two goats and four ducks, so we, we worked out the numbers.
Up here.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Of the applicant?
Of the applicant at this time. Okay, I would like to go ahead and open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wished to speak for or against this application. If you're present, please come forward and introduce yourself for the record, and if you're in Zoom, push your little hand button and. Let the record indicate, no one from the Zoom part of the meeting wished to speak for or against this application, and also from the public that is present here at the meeting. No one wished to speak for or against, therefore I bring it back to the board for any further questions?
Questions of the applicant?
Of the applicant. Okay. No? Any closing comments from the applicant?
No, thank you for taking the time and for considering our request.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna close all input from the public and bring it to the board for discussion.
Yeah, I'm not gonna support this, this is a residential zone. It, it's that simple, but this ordinance is relatively new. Well, we called it the chicken ordinance, it was an ordinance prohibiting animals, you know what I mean, the use of agricultural animals in residential zone. It was that simple, it's not, all ordinance, this isn't dated from the nineteen eighties or the nineteen seventies, this was just, we had a series, you don't know this because you don't live here, but we had a series of public hearings on this less than five or six years ago. It was debated, there were hearings that lasted.
Two years, though.
They spent two years to try and determine whether or not they were gonna allow any limited agricultural use in any of our residential zones, and the answer from the city council and the planning board was a resounding no. I'm not about to overturn that.
A couple actually moved out of the city so they could keep their rooster.
Yeah.
That ordinance was written for people to have a third or quarter acre lot, to have chickens. These people have over nine acres of land, and I commend them for asking for a variance.
Oh, yeah.
Because they could put those animals on there, nobody'd ever know about. So I, Daniel and Julian, it's nice of you to ask for it first, so I recommend that everybody let them have their animals. Nine acres of land is a lot, you'll never know those animals are there. Just because it's a residential zone, it's a unique lot, large property, they should be able to have a horse, I think, if they want. A couple of little goats, a couple of ducks. I mean, how much harm could it possibly do? That's why we have a variance application, so we can change the rules when it's warranted. So I, I truly support these people.
So what you're, if I could as the zoning is set up for all properties and where it benefits or not benefits, and each application being based off of the property under review is what you're indicating, so on this situation, there's special circumstances that whereas a lot that is a quarter acre.
Absolutely.
Is totally different than a lot that is nine acres. Okay, there's special conditions are that what am I looking for? The hardship in this case is where one shoe doesn't fit all is basically what I heard you say, whereas being Mike, it's also part of the planning board.
Correct.
Okay, let me add that part in, so he has was in on a lot of these discussions and stuff, so I'm not trying to convince anybody yes or no, so please don't do that, I'm just.
You can try to convince anybody of anything you want.
But I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to, 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 to lay it out to see, you know, that's the whole point of the discussion.
It is a unique lot, I did go up there, it's a hilly lot, it would be very difficult to subdivide, although it's not impossible. Okay, that ten acres borders up on Hillcrest, those are subdivisions up there. You know, it's, it's, it's a unique lot, I, I'll agree with, I'll, I'll definitely agree with Mike there.
And it looks like on the backside of that lot is the tanks, is that water tanks?
I'm not exactly sure what's up there.
The water department.
Is it the water department?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
So I don't think the water tanks in this situation, there's any complaint.
Go ahead.
I, I, please. Mr. Phil.
In it, I'm not worried about the size of the goats. Unless you want to think of, you were talking about an eighteen fifties house. Probably the nine point five acres that are left over on it, I'm from eighteen fifties, they had chickens, they had goats, they had animals there at some time over the course of our agricultural history. I would not, you know, hav- having been through these two years of discussions and recognizing that some of these these movements come forward such as keeping a chicken in the house or urban agricultural. What I see here, and I wouldn't go for it on a small or closer spot, is a piece of property that has enough room to keep some animals, whether you want to limit to what types, the size, how many, I don't know. But I don't think that they would necessarily be impacting the residents of the water towers or some of the other places around there. There's no residents, there's a few houses, but this is something that you wouldn't, you wouldn't tell them that they couldn't plant a garden, that's an agricultural use, but some of that same ordinance keeps us from gardening within certain areas of the town, certain types of trees.
Can have a fruit tree.
Right.
I mean, if you read it by the letter of the regulations, I don't even think fruit trees are allowed in.
No, that's exactly what I'm speaking on.
You know, it, it's.
In ten acres, can you have an apple tree out back, could you do three Bing cherry trees without scaring your neighbors?
I got a question. I got a question for staff. It. Are we able to, let's say there was a motion to approve, can it be conditioned with A, the quantity of animals?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. And B, can it be conditioned if the property is downsized? That this would come under review or something along those lines? Because a lot of the discussion here pro and con is predicated based on the size of the property and.
Right. I, I, I think you should condition it on the size of the lot remaining the same and probably condition it to just these property owners, that if the property is sold, then the use would go away. From a administrative standpoint, I would definitely want you to definitively say how many of each kind of animal so that we know what, what it is. You know, a- and to be clear, and I, I understand the applicant's intention, but to be clear from, from our definition standpoint, this, we consider ducks and goats to be livestock. We don't make a distinction. For those, for those kinds of animals, they are livestock. I understand that they will be considered as pets. I get it. But, you know, from a, from a definition standpoint, I mean, and that's why we're, one of the reasons that we're here.
Um, Mr. Tager, oh, could I ask, go ahead.
Go ahead, Roland.
Well, I, I have a statement. I think as far as the applicants are concerned, we should take a look at where their 10 acres is located in the city of Laconia. It's not in the heart of downtown. It's actually on the fringe of the city because it, right in back of them.
Yeah, I was going to say it, it, it's up on, it borders on Hillcrest, doesn't it?
And it's away from everything. It's, it's at the top of the hill.
No, I know where it is. I actually, I drove out there. You know what I mean? It's hilly. It's, um, you know, it's, it's remote. It's a big lot. I have no problem with the lot. I, I just have my, my only issue. My, my real issue is, is that this is not an old ordinance.
No.
This is a new ordinance. It was hashed out for two years, as you mentioned, and the determination was made by the people who made and wrote this ordinance that residential areas were not going to have livestock and they, they allowed, you know, and I know we have a variance process and I, and I respect that. We grant variances all the time for different things. My, I also, my other thing is, is as it sits right now, right now, we've seen Lakeport go through a resurgence. None of us ever here could have predicted a year ago. Okay. We don't know where that's going to end. Clinton Street isn't that long.
And where the rooster was concerned, he was living on Belvedere Street.
Well, yeah, and, and that happens to be a, you know, and that's a different neighborhood and a different lot and a different set of circumstances. And we're looking at this unique. And I agree. However, I can't get over the fact that this is a new ordinance, that the city council specifically and the planning board virtually unanimously, as well as, you know what I mean, virtually determined that they did not want livestock in our two residential neighborhoods. And, and, and that is the law they made. When they determine this, and again, it's not from the 60s or the 70s or the 80s. This law is, is not that old. It just predates Dean, I think. Um, so, um, and I don't, I, I, for that reason, I, I really can't support it. I, I do understand the nature of the lot. It is a big lot. It is way out there. But I just don't think an agricultural use in, in or livestock use in a residential zone is an appropriate use, not for a city, not for an area of the city that we're seeing expanding in a completely different direction. And that's, that's just my feeling on this. And, you know, I, that's my opinion and that's what I've said.
You know, what we notice here as we do these meetings, and there are a lot of new people coming into the area. But what I see sometimes, whether it be here in the ordinance that is relative to keeping animals livestock or other uses that we've had come across. So we get a lot of people who move in and the first thing you got to do is change all the rules. But the rules were there for a reason. Right? And they, these types of things here, they really did put in a lot of time and effort, the community, the boards to come to some sort of decision. And that's the ordinance is the outcome of that.
I, I, that's, that's basically my statement. I, 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 is that had it not been such a recent thing, how, are we, were we looking at an ordinance that passed 100 years ago, I may have different feelings on this. But I don't, mostly because of that reason. It, it's just something the city council, and they do write our ordinances in our city and the planning board have determined that they do not want in any of our residential zones. And we don't have, we, our residential areas are what makes it livable. And that's my argument. And I, you know, that's all I'm going to say.
These people are not raising pigs for slaughter. I mean, a few, a few goats are similar to a few dogs. There's people that have five or six dogs in their house, several cats. Who knows what else? This is a unique property. This is not a quarter acre lot that they're asking, you know, to, to raise chickens in the backyard next to the fence.
Um, to that end, and I have another question for staff. Um, can we impose, if, if this were to, if a motion were to be made in the affirmative to support this, what kind of fencing requirements would we require for this? Bearing in mind goats can leap quite high and ducks can fly.
Dwarf dogs. They're tiny.
I mean, I don't know off the top of my head, but they are proposing a fenced in area, whether that's large enough for that number of animals, I'm, I'm not sure, but, but at this point in time, it's your decision is not whether it's a 10 by 10, 10 or 10 by 15 pen. Your decision is whether there's going to be a need for a pen period.
Right.
You know, it's, it's not, it's not the size of the, of the shelter or the size of the, of the fenced in area that is primarily your concern tonight. You know, the location of that is.
And, and that's what I was going to say. If, if this were to, if the prevailing wisdom of the, of enough members of this board were to grant that variance, would it be inappropriate to resc- to request a mini site plan review by the planning board? Not that I'm sure any of them know much more about this than, than we do, but I, I, I'm just saying, like, as you put it, where the pen is, where the river is in relation to where the pen is. I, I don't, I don't mean to recreate the wheel and put them through a whole site plan, but would it be prudent if it were to pass to recommend that the, that they submit some sort of a diagram as to where these, this would be?
You could, uh, that you definitely could do. And you, if you wanted to leave that up to staff to determine the appropriateness of that, or whether you wanted to recommend that this go to a minor site plan.
Yeah.
You could do that, but I mean, I, I'm comfortable with you delegating that to staff, whether you're comfortable with that or not, that's up to you.
No, I, I mean, I, you know, no insult to staff, but.
No, no, I know. I'm just. Yeah, I.
I mean, are there any conditions that whoever made the motion could include in their motion? That would provide for some form of a staff review before this.
Yes, yes, you could, you could do that.
Well, I'm not going to make this motion.
No, one would just say whoever makes the motion.
Okay, all right.
Along with.
But I didn't know if there are any specific conditions that you would recommend as the planning director.
We, we would, we would have to do a little bit of research to see what's an appropriate size enclosure for whatever number of animals that you decide is.
I think if you looked in the agricultural side, uh, where livestock is allowed, they have specifications for, for how much property is needed for each.
Right.
Horses and stuff like that. It's all.
Exactly. And I don't know what those are off the top of my head. So that's why I don't want to know whether a 10 by 10 pen is adequate for.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Because I don't know. I mean, there's, this is a big lot, but it's wooded, it's hilly.
Probably is, but yeah.
Uh, I, I mean, and those are considerations you take into consideration when you're considering agriculture and livestock, is terrain. Whether or not it's wet, there's a stream there. And not to mention that it's in a residential zone. I just don't know enough about this in terms of the nuts and bolts of this particular.
Just as a piece of information, I just did a really rudimentary search of the New Hampshire agriculture. They do have a manual called the Manual of Best Management Practices for Agriculture in New Hampshire. And it kind of.
We'll look at that and we'll go with that. And if you want to recommend that they go to minor site plan, I think that's a reasonable request.
I, I, I'm just, I'm just saying for whoever's going to make the motion.
Yeah.
I think it's a decision the board should be making. We don't have to pass it by.
Well, I know, we're going to pass, we're going to decide whether or not they can have this use. Somebody else is going to actually be the one that actually sees where it is on the land, just like any other site plan. You know, we say whether they can have the variance, then it goes to the planning board to determine where on the lot and what's appropriate and everything like that. That's up to staff or, or, or minor site plan, not, not us. We're just determining.
Did you draw a picture on the, oh, yeah.
Um, I did draw a picture on the
Proposal.
Yeah, on the proposal.
We're not taking any further, we're in the discussion portion and so I do apologize, but so it seems like we discussed it and like to entertain a, either a positive or a negative motion.
Well, I'll make a motion deny if, if.
If you so.
I'll make a motion to deny a request PL 2021 dash 0025. I don't have the full tax lot number. Karen, do you? Uh, is it on the schematic?
It's 368 dash 48 dash 43.
Dash 368 dash 48 dash 43. At 126 Clinton Street. And I'll make a motion to deny the variance request for livestock on this particular property. The reasons that I request, I, I am making my motion is that granting the variance is contrary to the public interest. Public interest through the zoning board and the city councils determine that they do not want agricultural livestock, livestock uses within our residential zones. Um, the spirit of the ordinance is not going to be observed because I don't, I, 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 I don't believe that, I do believe this is detrimental to the neighborhood in the area. I think the whole spirit, not only are we violating the ordinance, we're violating the whole spirit of the ordinance, which was to create residential zones that exclude livestock and those, and you know what I mean, and those kinds of agricultural uses. Uh, I, I, I don't know necessarily that it would do substantial justice to anything. The substantial justice clause is one that, that kind of defines so whether or not, you know, and so there's no, there's no real, there could be a loss to the general public in, in the long term. Cause you know, I, you know, and I don't know that that is outweighed by any gain to the applicant. Uh, there, I don't think it's going to have any effect on the property values at this point in time. I'd say going down the future, that it may not have an effect. Somebody may not want to buy one of those budding properties if it abuts what they believe to be livestock. And, um, I, there, I, I don't believe that there's a hardship criteria that's been met here. So that's my motion to deny. It only has to fail, just so you know, we don't have to pass all of these. All five of these criteria have to be met in the affirmative. I'm saying that right now you have met the criteria for the land values, but you have not met the other four. If, if that's my motion.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, we have discussion of the motion.
I would.
Discussion.
Of the motion.
Of the motion itself.
Not the situation.
Not the situation. We're done with the situation. It's now the motion.
I'll discuss a little bit more if you want to hold back.
We would have to vote on this motion that's on the table. And then if that motion fails, then it would open it up for further discussion. But currently through the rules, we have a motion on the table.
And we could discuss this motion. I, I just feel it's ridiculous to deny these people.
What part of the motion is that you're going to reference that?
The motion that it's detrimental to the public. That it's the spirit of the ordinance, ordinance is broken if we would grant it instead of denying it. That it would diminish any property values if it was denied or granted.
I, I didn't think, I didn't say it would.
You said in the future, somebody might not want to buy a house next door to a farmhouse.
Variance is run with the property. They, they, they run in, at infinitum. But I've got a motion. If you make a motion, someone, if this doesn't pass, someone else makes.
We're discussing your motion, Gal. That's all.
All right.
And I just, I have to voice my opinion before we vote. Because it's, looks like it's going to be a close vote here. Let's go ahead and vote.
Okay. No more discussion. All those in favor of the motion to deny? All those wish to are not in favor of denial. I guess that's the way to put it. So the motion to deny passes three to two.
I'm sorry, Fallon.
Thank you for your advocacy.
For coming before us. Um, if the city council changes its mind and decides that they want to alter that, and there's nothing that says that you can't pursue this through further channels with the planning board and ask them to reconsider. You know, their recommendations on the ordinance, then, you know, should that change in the future, then feel free to reapply. I'm just applying the old law as we have it in front of us to this particular application and where you are. It's nothing personal. It's just.
Why we have a variance.
It's, well, wait, it is.
Okay. Thank you. We'll do the next application now. The next application is 2021 dash 0027. It's a variance on 206 Belvedere Street. Applicants request a variance from Article 6, Section 235 dash 34, minimum lot frontage to allow for a subdivision of a lot. The applicant.
Hi.
Introduce yourself for the record.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'm Jake Harrigan. Uh, the owner of the property and the person who submitted the variance application. Uh, basically what I have there in front of me, or as far as you might have the maps I've drawn in front of you, there's 90 feet currently of street frontage. I believe there was almost 24,000 square feet of lot. So basically what I was looking to do is through variance, uh, make that back portion of the lot accessible for building. The hardship is in the minimal frontage. Uh, when that was zoned, I'm sure it didn't fall under the 80 feet per property. The property's been there for probably about 110 years or so. As you can see, the, the setbacks that are, that are shown or that I've asked for uh, fit within any allowable setbacks. They don't negatively impact the property around, uh, goes in good standing with what the current land use is in the area. Uh, and it provides another opportunity for housing. Uh, in, in, in truth, the property, I would, I would look to possibly make that back property, my uh, ex's property, she had, we have a handicap granddaughter. So that back property is, that's my dream. That doesn't mean that that's what, what I would put on there. Uh, there's a lot of stuff that kind of has to happen in between. That doesn't mean that that's what, what I would put on there. Uh, there's a lot of stuff that kind of has to happen in between now and then. But as you know, this is the beginning of that process, so uh, I need to be able to know that it can move forward or not before I. Take that leap of faith, so.
Would you be, you want to subdivide, so you'd be creating two lots?
Correct.
Okay. And that would.
If you, if you were trying to make this for your daughter, you could do an accessory dwelling.
We could do it, you could have applied for a variance.
Without subdivising the property at all.
Well, like I said, I, I don't want the properties to necessarily stay on the same. I, I, I would want it to be separated.
No, I understand that, and then that would give you the right to sell it or not sell it in the future. You're just carving out two separate lots.
Essentially.
Yeah, okay. So if you, you wanted a detached ADU, you, you would need to come in front of us, and that would be the case if you needed something for a family member. But you want to actually subdivide this, in theory, in the future, you could sell this back lot.
Potentially, if that's.
Once the subdivision is done, that gives you the right to sell it.
Yes.
Right? Yeah, that's your understanding?
That is.
What's your frontage on Belvedere Street? Is that ninety feet?
Ninety feet.
And you, how big are you looking for, for a driveway here, fifteen?
I'm looking for fifteen. I know that that then uh, kind of makes it so I don't have eighty feet with the original property. Um, you know, and that's, if I, if I need to make it ten and then eighty, so be it. The fifteen was just courtesy for the, for the neighbor.
What, what is the, can I ask, what is the minimum frontage or?
The minimum frontage is eighty feet.
Eighty feet?
Yes.
All right.
For staff, there's a. He has a drawing here.
Yeah.
That shows the footprint. Does that provide all the necessary?
It meets minimum lot size requirements. He can meet setback with a structure. Density.
Pervious, impervious, and all that.
Green space.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Green space.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? At this time.
Uh, no, one question. If you were to put a driveway to access that second lot. Uh, on that particular driveway, how far away would that driveway be from the abutting property line? Um. I guess it's.
There's a very minimal setback for that. It's like zero.
So that, on this map, so there would be like almost a virtual zero setback from the abutting.
Which is why I kept it at fifteen. Uh, it only needs to be ten. So I kept it at fifteen to allow for a couple of feet off from that. There's, if, you can't see it on the drawing, but there's actually a stone wall that abuts the two properties.
Oh, okay, all right, yeah.
And it, and it actually lifts up two or three feet into the neighbor's yard, so I mean, it's, it's already there, so it's.
It's already there, so you're not going over.
I'm not going over it, trust me.
All right.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time? There being none, I'd like to go ahead and open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public or Zoom land wishes to speak for or against this application. If you're here as part of the public, please come to the podium, and if you're on Zoom, please wiggle that little hand. That the record indicate no one from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, that being both Zoom in in person. And I'll bring it back to the board. For further questions.
I think it's pretty cut and dry what he wants to do.
Okay. Any closing comments?
I'd thank you all for considering the uh, the variance application, pretty much, I appreciate. Actually gotten quite an education just sitting through this tonight as to what the process is, so. Uh, I appreciate what you folks do. Thank you.
Yes.
If I could, Mr. Chairman. Just to be clear of what you're doing, uh, you, you have one lot that has conforming frontage. And you're going to be creating two lots that, that do not have conforming frontage, which is fine. I'm just, you know, when you word your motion. You're creating a new lot in the back that's going to have fifteen feet of frontage, and the existing lot will then have seventy-five, so that becomes non-conforming. But that's part of the variance. I just want to be clear that that's what you're doing.
Does the variance and the regulations allow us to create? A non-conforming lot? I know we can.
Yes.
Have a, a non-conforming lot and provide variances to it, but.
Yes, you can create a non-conforming lot through the variance process.
Okay.
Yep. I just wanted to be.
I know we can, but are we allowed to?
You are allowed to. You can, and you're allowed to.
Wow, all of that permission in one statement.
Hand me the keys.
Okay. Discussion.
Because it's a point where.
Can hear a pin drop.
Will, will this, in the understanding of two non-conforming lots, will it benefit at all to have it only ten feet? Or did that be a constrictive driveway? What's a minimal size of a driveway?
The minimum driveway width is twelve feet, maximum is sixteen for a one-way driveway, which is standard residential. Twelve feet is the minimum width.
That's, max is sixteen?
Mm-hmm, for a single, for a one-way.
Oh.
Yeah.
So at twelve, you would still be under the eighty and make it non-conforming. Ten would make it.
Hard to use.
Hard to use. Fifteen would give us some slack against the uh, property line.
But it would create two non-conforming properties.
Right, and I guess.
Well, any way you look at it, you're going to create, if I understood those dimensions correctly, you're going to create a, any way you look at it. You're going to create a non-conforming lot. Ninety minus twelve is, is seventy-eight.
Yeah.
So, so we would really be creating two non-conforming lots.
We're going to anyways at fifteen, so.
Right, right, yeah, I just want to go through. And, and then I guess my next question, and I don't, I really don't know the answer to this, and I guess this is the way I'm looking at it. Would I allow a detached ADU on this piece of property?
Okay, with or without a separate entrance?
With or without, you know what I'm saying? Yeah, with a, with a separate entrance. I, I mean, I have to, it's, it's.
Oh, I'm putting ADU on it?
I, I, and I'm trying to, that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying I wouldn't. I'm just trying to look at it also from, through that lens, is. If he were in front of us with a request for a detached ADU, which would require what a variance and a, a, a special exception. Would I, would I think that? And also.
Why would you need a variance?
Because you need a, and, and you need a variance for a detached ADU, and then you need a special exception to the ADU. When the special exception would go first, but I'm just looking at it through that lens. Um, how big would the back lot be? Ninety by ninety?
And then it's a one sixty-five by fifteen, I believe.
Okay, and would, would, would the applicant have to come back in front of us in order to build on it?
No. That's what I already asked the uh.
Oh, okay, all right, all right.
That, looking at the footprint that was drawn on this, that it would meet the minimum standards for a buildable lot. With all, without needing any variances for setbacks or anything.
And if, and if, and if the, whoever owned that lot were to want to build or expand on something bigger than that, then that would force them to come in front of us for front setback, side setback. Because what we're doing is actually creating. You know, a lot with no frontage to some degree, so.
I make a request to, to. Reopen this to the public.
Okay, and so.
I have some questions.
Oh, all right, okay, yeah, I.
Just dawned on me that, and I need to ask.
Do we need a motion for that, Mr. Chair, or can we just do that?
I wanted y'all just to say.
I, if you have other questions, go for it.
Okay, I'm going to reopen it to the public and then I give everything. Uh, first question to staff. Um, is for water and sewage for this subdivision. And this would be for the applicant. Do you, do you currently, sir, have water and sewage, or do you have a septic system? And.
I have, I have city water and sewer.
You have city water and sewer?
Yeah.
Okay.
So. If, if you approve the variance to create essentially two non-conforming lots because of frontage. Which is fine. If that's what you decide to do, that's fine. Still needs to go to planning board for the subdivision.
Okay, that's what.
We, we will. We will require that water and sewer be installed. To the back lot. To service that lot.
Because the question I was leading into with that is if they had. What would be the lot size for not having city water and?
Oh, it's.
It's bigger than what's here.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so in order for, to make this.
For this size, city water and sewer is a requirement, yes.
Okay, um, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Question for staff. Would that be the only non-conformity on this lot would be frontage?
Correct.
Okay, in other words, we're not creating a lot that's too size according to our, too small, according to our table of dimensional uses. So the only non-conformity is the front, is the front setback.
I mean, frontage, frontage, the frontage number is again, to, to particularly for our new folks. Primarily control density.
Yes.
If you want to look at this from the standpoint of most lots that are ninety feet wide are not. Two hundred and something feet deep, so you know, you're, you're controlling density from the standpoint of the depth of the, of the lot. Uh, it's just another way of controlling density. We just, you know, again, we get into that, we got to set the rules, and here's where we, here's the starting point, so. Starting point is eighty feet and. But you, you look at most of the other lots in the RG zone, they, they don't have two hundred and something feet of.
No, no, and I, and I, I understand that on this lot. I just wanted to know if the back lot, the only non-conformity. Was the front setback. We're not creating a lot too size, too small by our, and you say no, so I, and uh, that's, that answers my question.
Okay, thank you. Any closing comments? I'm going to give you another opportunity before I close it again. Okay, so I'm going to close it to the public and bring it back to the board. Because I thought I overlooked something and I wanted to make sure I did. Okay.
That would be my question exactly, if I could have passed this.
So any other discussion?
I'm looking at the.
The area up there is. Has a lot of unique lots that are very deep.
Yeah.
If everybody does this, it's going to get crowded.
Well, that's, you know, it's, it's interesting to the fact that there's very little difference. Other than critters being involved versus non-critters being, two-legged critters versus. Animals and livestock.
Well.
Because this is an interesting lot. You're going to create a frontage of fifteen feet. Road frontage for one, which is going to make an extreme. Uh, non-conformity versus the, the other lot won't have any issue whatsoever. It's the new lot that's.
The new lot. Now, my concern is the new lot, you know?
The new lot, not the old lot, and you create a lot of issues and.
Because it looks to me if he puts in the, what, what appears to be a driveway and a parking area as planned, I don't know that he meets the green space requirements. But then, that's why I asked if this was an additional non-conformity. Because if, if, I'm just looking at what he's drawn here, and I, I, I know nothing has been designed yet. But we also have green space requirement. Sam knows green space requirements would apply to the rear lot as well as the front lot, correct? And once he puts a building on that and a driveway. With adequate parking, which is what, two cars? You know, give or take two cars? Then are we, is that lot going to have enough green space to support? The driveway and a building on it, and that's, that was my question. Does he come back in front of us because he's violating our green space requirements? Potentially down the.
Didn't we just ask that?
We did, but did that, was that, is that something that, that you considered or, you know, I, I.
I, I, I think he's going to be close, but the other thing that can occur is the. Property line that he's proposing right now to be the, the new rear property line of the existing lot could be moved a little closer to the, to the existing house to, to. That's not what you're deciding.
No, no, and that's what I'm saying. So could that be, that would be fleshed out?
Ten feet closer to the house to give you another whatever, square footage for green space. I mean, that's, that's part of the subdivision process.
I was just going to say, is that part of the subdivision process?
Yep.
That'd be another hundred and eighty square feet.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm saying. I mean, we, you know, I don't want to be creating another lot than in a year. He's in front of us because he needs green streets, green space waivers and. And other dimensional. I mean, I don't, I don't want to, you know, seem like we're creating a monster here.
But it does give credence to how many other lots are.
Sure.
I, I.
That opportunity.
Yeah, each lot is different. Um, and I agree, there's a uniqueness to some of the lots that are, a lot of these lots in Lakeport are deep. Um, it was just the way the city was laid out. It's, it's not just this one. There's a lot of them out there that are deep. And, and in defense of the proposal. Although I haven't made my mind up on it, density is one of those things. I'm on the master plan steering committee and, and, and task number one. Uh, according to the planning department and the master plan is to address some of the density issues that we have in the city. And address our zoning such that we are increasing the availability of smaller lots so that we can actually. Maybe get someone to build some houses people can afford.
Not happening.
And well, well, no, and well, there's that, I mean, there's the market, but what I'm saying is, is this is something that the, that the master plan steering committee and the master plan. It's almost, it's almost been called to discuss is residential density. Um, it was one of the things the city council has addressed, planning board in its own little way, has addressed the need to address. Our lot sizes and stuff, and I'm only throwing that out there. I'm just saying. This is in some way consistent with the master plan, although we are creating.
Well, you can't do variances by the master plan.
No, you can't, but yeah.
I think that will get you in trouble in court.
Well, it, it probably would, but in our overall decisions as to whether or not we're going to the planning board or someone's going to allow a subdivision.
You bring up an interesting thing. Is that what a city does when they run out of space?
Pretty much, yes. Either that or you allow them, you let people go up. I mean, there's only a couple of places that you can go to a city when you're running out of space. You go in the New York way and you build up, or you, you address the different sizes of the lots. There's only two ways.
To, to be clear, we are not running out of land, however.
However.
The utilities already exist here, so therefore it is relatively inexpensive and relative is the key word there. To create additional housing, additional lots where the utilities are already in existence.
Okay. Okay. The, the second house. Uh, would be a stick-built house, not a manufactured.
They, it could be manufactured. We don't, we don't have a. We, we don't have a regulation one way or the other. It would have to meet all the requirements, would have to have foundation, et cetera, et cetera, but could be manufactured.
And not a mobile home.
Correct.
Okay, any other discussion?
The neighbors have not interjected at all. I assume there's no.
No.
Better.
Just remember, this lot is here forever, never, never.
All right. There's no more discussion. Someone wants to. Put together a motion?
I'll make a motion. That we accept. Application two oh two one dash zero zero two seven. Tax map two thirty-nine twenty-one dash sixty-nine and two oh six Belvedere Street. Looking for variance here to create from Article six, two thirty-five, thirty-four. Variance from the minimum lot frontage to be able to create another lot out back. The, um, variance is not gonna be contrary to public interest on this particular piece as it is a large lot. And once again, the, um, the utilities are right there, maybe this is stuff that we start to see. Certainly increases housing availability to the family and a decision to be able to do with it what they will later on. Knowing, knowing that, um, this would be, uh, this would be something that, uh, is being created whether you do it under an ADU or this variance. This gives the ability for it to be sold later on. Should not diminish the value of the surrounding areas because it'll be new structures, not building a shack out back, we'll be creating something that's conformative to all our building codes. And I would say that in this we consider the size of this property. And we have seen, we have seen other, um, other attempts at, um, increasing the, um, residential, um, availability. This is not gonna, this will be reasonably, it's not gonna impact any, uh, street parking, everything seems to come back in and be conformative for the size and density of a lot that has water and sewer on it.
Okay. We have a motion?
What was the hardship?
The, the hardship here, I'm not going with the, uh, the, um, hardship on, on it, uh, the special conditions as it is, um, able to absorb the building out back and without necessarily being a hardship, it could, um, we could demonstrate fairness, substantial justice for, um, investment in your property.
Okay. Have a motion? Do we have a second? Going once, going twice?
I'll second.
We have a second, discussion of the motion?
Um, the only thing that I would like to embellish on what Mike said is that there is no fair and substantial relationship between the general public purposes of our, of this ordinance and the specific application of this property to that ordinance.
There.
Okay.
Concur.
That would just be an embellishment on Mike's motion, I'm didn't saying I'm supporting it, I'm just saying I think that's what he wanted to say for the record, that he wanted his motion to read.
Okay, I agree.
Okay, um, for substantial justice. Okay, I, I'm done, I'm, I'm done with the motion as he made it. I, I just wanted, I think, to, and to-
So you accept her?
Is that, is that, is that a fair rendition of, I think, what you were, what, what you wanted to say for the hardship?
Labyrinth of my brain.
It's okay, yeah, mine's not much, my, my, my synapses are just as crossed as yours are, I'm reading something.
So we have a motion, we have the second, we've discussed it, all those in favor of the motion? All right. All those against the motion? The motion fails. All right. Do I, I don't need to follow up with a motion of denial since it failed a completed motion?
Yes.
Yes, what?
You need to, you need to have a motion to deny and explain the reasons why you're denying.
Okay.
Okay, well, I, I'm, 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 I'll make a motion to deny the request. I'm having a hard time with that, it's like funny, I don't like it, but I can't think of a really good reason why to deny it, that's, that's kinda, you know, I-
And I know why, it's a slippery slope.
I, I, I mean, it's not really the slippery slope, because we look at every property individually. It, it, it's more of, I just wish this was being done legislatively instead of by us. It's kinda like the court, we're, we're, we're creating, it's like the court making law as opposed to the legislature making law, which is, you know, them changing density requirements, but I, I can't make a motion in a negative-
We can discuss each part of it as a motion.
I can discuss one part of it.
And I could start with the hardship, I have not seen a hardship myself in why this special property leads credence to being subdivided and providing only road frontage of fifteen feet
Right.
On one and
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five feet for the other, as the seventy-five foot wouldn't be so bad as the fifteen feet to me is excessively small.
Yeah.
And so therefore, this, this lot has, um, currently is a, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? It's a proper lot size, frontage, okay? So not only would we be creating one non-conforming lot, but two non-conforming lots, whereas the second non-conforming lot is even extreme non-conforming, okay?
Where would you put that under, would you put that-
Under hardship.
Under the hardship?
Yep.
You would put that under the hardship?
Meet the hardship criteria, cause this lot is, has no special redeeming value. Uh, I mean, as far as any conditions that's making it such that that variance is necessary. Okay, it's not that it's doing anything other than creating another lot at the expense of the road frontage.
Okay, and then, and, and the other thing that I could say is as the way the zoning is written now, with the density requirements that we have, the benefit to the general public, and the benefit to the owner far outweighs the benefit to the general public. Um, and we could, you know, it, it, it's, there's a balancing act there, and I don't think that balance has been met with the, with the short, with the, by creating this extraordinarily non-conforming lot. Now, putting that into words is a lot more difficult than that, but it's, I think it's the size of the frontage that, that has kinda got me.
Now, and I'm just, I'm sorry, go ahead. If this is an ADU, does it need another driveway or?
It could have a shared driveway with an ADU, this is actually creating a driveway.
With the same frontage.
Remains with the same frontage.
Same frontage.
You have the utility, utility of having your extra building.
If it meets the square footage of being able to have an ADU.
Yeah, we could vary, we could, we could create a variance for that, that would be, that would be more minimal of a request. But that's not a denial, what we need to do is, can you craft a, a motion to deny on this, I, I-
The variance to me is not, is contrary to the public interest as we have the variances and as I'm looking through these lots and stuff like that, you start to carve out, uh, and change the character of these larger lots that have that ninety-foot, uh, frontage and start to reduce it and then it starts to crowd out, okay? The spirit of the ordinance is being observed by denying this because the ordinance is set in place so that you have minimum, minimum requirements that keep your neighborhood this, within the same character. Okay? The justice is being done because you are following the, uh, the character of the neighborhood and what is being done, uh, with it, the values of the sounding properties, no one's proved it would have a plus or a minus, okay?
It's just sort of a, it's a wash, I, you know?
Well, I've had stuff come back from court because it wasn't proven it wouldn't and it wasn't proven it would improve the values. And we've had a judge at one point kick one of our motions back. That comes with being here so long, you know these things. And the hardship, I've already spoken the hardship, you know, so there's multiple avenues that I look at it from that. In this particular instance, for this particular property, uh, the denial would seem to be, uh, the appropriate way. So that's my motion.
Okay.
That's a motion, you need a second?
That's a motion to deny for the-
It's a motion to deny.
Second.
We have a second, discussion of the motion. There being none, all those in favor of the denial? Okay. We have a five-zero on denial. Okay. All right. Now we're moving on to other business, other business is a motion to rehear application two zero two one dash zero zero one three S E Watson Road, okay? Under the rules that we follow as far as doing rehearings and stuff like that, that is totally discussed at the board level, we have no public input whatsoever. They can sit quietly if they're in Zoom or in, uh, the public here and listen to our thing as we determine as a board. If we feel like we have erred in our judgment and in our motion and would like to vote to have a rehearing. Okay?
Okay.
All right.
I would support a rehearing and I, after reading the, um, the, uh, the motion for the rehearing, a couple of things jumped out at me. I don't necessarily agree with all of this, but again, it only, doesn't have to fail, it only has to fail on one of five criteria. Do you know what I'm saying, a variance, that's, that's the point or special exception?
It only has to fail on one of five.
It only has to end, I, I, I do, I am still, I am concerned about the traffic. You put ninety-five units in there, two cars per unit in the middle of the summer on a busy road and you've got, you created a significant, significant amount of traffic in an area that is already noted for not necessarily being the safest road, okay? Second of all, I'm very intrigued by the argument made here that, as you know, I made an, I made an argument before that this is not a campground, this is an RV park. And one of the recommendations of our master plan was that we develop an ordinance that makes a distinction between those two things and we have never done that. We are, like I said, the master plan steering committee is meeting. This will be something that we are, we are doing, in fact, I've already submitted a note to the chair that I plan on drafting some sample ordinances for review of the master plan steering committee, planning department, legal. And, um, you know, when, however it comes up through the chain of command that we actually make a distinction between what an RV park is and what a campground is. These are deeded properties. These are not registered.
No, I would point out that these are under control of the people who are developing this.
Yearly leased.
And they're leased.
Yearly.
Okay, cause in his rules and bylaws, that he, his proposed rules and bylaws that he gave to us, he indicated that these would be deeds registered with the record, with the, um, with the registry of deeds, which makes them permanent, not temporary.
No, I don't remember that.
I did not, and I know this other park that they operate.
It's seasonal, it's definitely seasonal.
Right.
Okay, I, you know, I mean, I didn't, you know, we all agree that it's seasonal.
As soon as you sell a lot off, then you change the character of it and that's why they weren't doing that, they were-
I admit, I completely understood it to be just the opposite, in his proposed bylaws to us, it said that these would be registered with the registry of deeds. If we vote-
It's not kind of minimized like Pine Hollow Park or some of the other ones.
And if we vote to reconsider it, we can put those conditions on it. If we decide to go forward with a, you know, just because we reconsider it, doesn't mean we won't grant it again. Well, okay, and, and that's, and, and that, and that we could, we could go forward, um, uh, you know, and determine that, and I am concerned with the traffic and the pedestrian safety, I don't think he's met that hurdle. Uh, that's a, that's a, that corner is a tough corner. Um, it's always been a tough corner.
The, as far as the use and what it's called, the planning department told us what the use is, okay? And we questioned and queried the planning department and the planning director themselves stood up and indicated that this was what it is. And so that's what we based our motion on was by the advice who gives us those directions.
Exactly, um, I also-
The planning department, and as far as the traffic count and stuff, one would also have to go that this is going to the planning board. And it's being, uh, planned, they drew out ninety-five lots, it doesn't mean they get ninety-five lots. The planning board has yet to review this action and has not determined. So it could be eighty, it could be eighty-five, it could be ninety-five, we don't know. And the actual traffic, no matter what you develop up there, and I think that was also discussed, was the fact that anything you develop up there, you're gonna have traffic. If you put a hotel there, you're gonna have traffic and you're gonna have more traffic.
Single-family residential, so I don't know necessarily that it, a hotel would be-
Hotels up there and other developed properties.
Commercial resort?
No, wait a second, this is single-family residential zone, it's not commercial resort.
I think it's commercial zone.
Is it commercial resort?
It's commercial resort.
Short-front residential, it's short-front residential.
Allowed to do this.
I know he's allowed to do it, and again, I argue and then, you know-
That's what also gives you the hotel and anything else which would have just as much, if not more, traffic than-
Potentially, you're right, you know, I mean, it's only gonna be seasonal use, whether it was a hotel or anything else like that. And then, of course, there's a concern, this will be addressed in planning if it goes forward, I, I just, it, it's, it's, I just don't, it, it, there's just a part of me that I, I, and I misinterpreted what he put, but I read the bylines that these things were not gonna remain registered with the Department of Motor Vehicles, they're gonna be-
The units themselves, or the, not, not, not the lot. The lots are gonna be leased yearly. The actual unit themselves, they have a choice of, of putting a tag on it, from what I understood, was to put a tag on it or they could register it and pay property tax. And there was-
Yeah, it's probably-
It was brought up also during that meeting and I don't- And I don't remember the exact words, but the planning director did address that part as far as how it met with which way it went so that they could derive their, their taxes from it.
Okay. Um, I guess I, I, I just.
Just don't remember the exact words.
No, I know. Yeah. It was a couple of months ago. Um, I, and, and of course, and now I have a concern, which I believe if this goes forward or we don't rehear it as it will go forward is I have, I have a concern with the, with just the nature of the lot. It's wet. Um, I, I would have liked to have seen a condition that we have at the owner's expense. Um, a con, uh, an independent conservation consultant. Now, I talked to Dean about this. He did indicate that when it gets through the planning board and the conservation commission that there will be, it will have to get DES permitting. And that, that is something the planning board could require if they felt that it needed it going forward would be in, at, at the, at the guy, at the owner's expense, not at the city's expense. I don't believe we should be paying for this. But, um, right now, you know, but, but my concern is, is goes to the definition of what is a campground and what is a, what is a, a, a subdivision or not really a subdivision. Um.
When we had that discussion though.
A seasonal housing development. And because of the building, you're going to allow building on three sides of it, three sided porches. I mean, that, that makes it more of a permanent structure. They're not, a campground implies that it's temporary. It's temporary and seasonal. These things are not temporary. Once you build three things around it, you're not going to move it in and out. You're going to have to sell it. And include, uh, could have to go through a deed process if they choose to register it at the registry of deeds. That's not temporary.
No, the deed itself of the land.
The deed itself of the land, but if the unit is registered at the, as, at, at the registry of deeds, then it's going to require everything that a deed sale requires as opposed to just a motor vehicle sale. And that implies a measure of permanence, not temporary. And I say the key word to this whole, my old support for rehearing is these are not temporary. If they were temporary, they'd be four wheelers and you know what I mean? Or what do you call a fifth wheeler and you could back it in? And if you wanted to go someplace else, you could back it out.
But the whole thing was based on the fact that the description and the direction was provided by the planning department.
And I, with all due.
Last we're gonna.
We, this to me, I also.
Would have to say and have another meeting on that definition.
An administrative challenge because we have the right to determine an administrative challenge to a definition. I interpret this request for rehearing uh, under chapter number one is a specific challenge to the planning director's definite categorization of this as campground. I made that argument before. You guys have all heard me. I interpreted this as a challenge to that. And we do have the right as a zoning board to determine whether or not an administrative decision was made in what we believe is in error. And in this case, and no offense to any people involved, because I know the planning department made this determination. I believe the determination of this as a campground as opposed to an RV park was made in error. And, and that's my argument as to why we should rehear this.
Okay. What does the rest of the board feel?
I agree with a lot of what Gail was saying.
Okay.
I do. I, I, but I can't vote. I know that.
Right.
I know that. So.
I do have a.
Only those who were part of the motion, unfortunately.
Well, she can't make her, um.
Well, go, go ahead. I mean.
I, I mean, yeah, you can, you know.
I was just concurring with what she was saying. It's. So maybe once it gets to the environmental committee, it'll be structured differently, but they're too crowded. They're not leaving green space. I mean, and they're going to have sheds and God knows what else.
I think that needs to be determined by engineering. It needs to be determined by actual engineering pictures, actually layouts, their discussion with.
Now, remember, we were not discussing the layout.
Right. Just whether it could be there.
We were right. That's the only thing that we voted on was whether it was not. Because after we vote whether or not it could be there, then the rest of the process kicks in. And at that point.
And, and my argument goes to the heart of this discussion that I don't believe.
I sat here and listened to that entire presentation. And when they talked, they were specifically not talking about a campground. They were talking about an RV facility because they were talking about, uh, camp model, uh, park models, which are not dragged behind a truck. They're made, they don't, they don't have wheel, uh, axles. They are put on blocks in the, in the position. These people are going to be, uh, these units were going to be taxed by the city, the unit, not the land.
Right.
The land gets taxed in the end too. Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It gets, it gets taxed.
As a whole.
I'm not talking about the ownership of the land. I'm talking about the ownership of the specific units. Each one owned by a specific person. And that's what I heard. And I didn't hear anything about a campground.
Well, but the, the application is for a campground. The request, the basic variance was to allow a campground in this zone.
Well, they never discussed campground.
They did. That was all I discussed was that it's not a campground.
We talked about park models and campgrounds and it is a RV park. It's not a campground where somebody would pitch a tent or have a trailer that they haul in for a weekend and leave. So it is a more permanent type RV park. The units are ta, charged tax by the city. The land is charged tax to the owner of the RV park that they lease the space to the RVs.
Right.
I thought we talked about it, voted for it, and that was the end of the discussion.
Well, this is a recon, request by somebody to reconsider it.
Why should we reconsider what we discussed and voted for last month?
The request came from the Butters in Maryland. Okay?
When it goes to the planning board, I plan on the houses that are along the units that are going to be in the backside along Maiden Lady Cove. I would not like them so close to the houses back there. But that's another story.
That, yeah.
That come, that's in the future.
It's the use that.
It's the use and we specifically approved a campground, not an RV park. And there's a difference. And they kept calling it a campground. So Marcia was in on that discussion. Well, you, you, this is a chance to, if you want to rethink this, I don't believe it's a campground. That's been, that was the heart of my argument.
Very difficult. It was a very difficult decision for me.
Okay?
Yeah.
Uh, in retrospect, would you like to reevaluate that decision? You may vote the same way. There's no rule that says you can't. It's just, we're only motioning now as to whether we want these folks to reapply or come back and we can have a further discussion on this. If we want to rehear it, we're not really determining anything that we want to hear.
I thought that if we were going to, uh, open this up for a rehearing, there had to be new information provided. And I looked at this and I don't see any new information being provided.
There isn't. It's everything we've discussed at the meeting. There's nothing new evidence or anything that was.
I, I believe their discussion about the master plan and the request of the master plan that at some point.
Base our decision.
It needed to be done six months ago or whatever, but now you, now we're rolling into this.
But it's, it's one of the, one of the requirements of a special exception is that it meets the criteria of their master plan. And that is consistent with the master plan. And the master plan is specifically asked for somebody, planning department, for the city council, for somebody to distinctly make a decision between a recre, or RV park and a campground.
But the master plan is not enacted at the moment.
Well, we have a master plan.
Right. And I don't think I remember that being part of the current adopted master plan.
No, but I do really call it being a, I, I think it's, it gives me enough reason to want to rehear it and rethink.
I don't think that would stand up in court.
Well, that's.
Using a, a, a.
Future, potential future.
Right. Cause anything.
Definition.
Right.
Well, I mean, my motion is to rehear it.
I'm not trying to, to, other than I try to keep us in or out of court. And that's why I'm looking at that. I'm not afraid to go to court. I'm just, you know, when you're going to do something, you got to make sure that you're not doing something that's going to automatically fly in the face of it.
All right. No, that's fair. And, and again, and the other thing is, is I, I, the traffic is a concern. And of course, like I said, I, I'm concerned with the lot itself, but that's going to get, if this go, if we don't rehear it, if it gets approved, but I just don't believe it's a campground. I believe the variance, the decision that it was a campground was made in honest error. And, um, and that's why I'm going to support a motion for a rehearing. Whether or not I get any support at all, I'm used to going it alone and I could, if it fails, it fails. That's my motion that we rehear this.
Selby.
Clarification, are you making, just for clarification for them, for them, you are making a motion. Okay?
I am making a motion that we rehear this application based on the, on the information provided to us specifically that, again, I hold to my definition that, that my determination, this is not a campground, it's an RV park. So we have approved a campground.
Can you show me a definition for a campground?
Yeah, it's right in the, it's right in the book.
For an RV park in the same book.
That's the problem. We have a definition for campground. In this, in this, I read this, um, two months ago, a definition of a campground is, since there's an operative word here, a campground is a plot of ground to which upon two or more campsites are located, established or maintained for occupancy by campery, by camping units as temporary living quarters. Temporary is the operative word here. These are going to be permanent structures. They're deeded. They're going to be built around. There's going to be sheds. There's going to be porches. There's going to be.
Have you been to the Weers lately?
I have been to the Weers. In fact, I'm there every day.
That stuff is all over the place.
And.
All right. So if you look at a camping unit, which is the next definition down, it says any camp, trailer, cabin, lean to recreational vehicle or similar structure established or maintained and operated in a campground as temporary living quarters for recreation, education and, and vacation purposes. As this is just a seasonal unit, then it's not.
But it's not a temporary seasonal unit. It's a permanent seasonal unit, whether it's occupied season, whether it's a permanent unit, whether it's occupied seasonally or not.
They move them in, they can move them out also.
Not if they're built around, not if they're put on blocks.
If you take down a, a canopy, if, if the, the units are not there forever, they can be moved. They brought them in, they can take them out.
But they're going to put them on blocks. They're, they're not going to be five wheelers that you could just hook.
Block's not a foundation. That's not, it wouldn't get a definition of a permanent foundation.
Okay. Well, I've made my argument for rehearing. That's all I'm going to say. I'm done.
So we have a motion on the table. For a rehearing. Do we have a second? Going once. Going twice. Going the third time. There's no second. So do we have a, a motion to deny rehearing?
I'll make a motion to deny a rehearing for the, um, was the applicant, yeah, what do we have?
It's Watson Road.
Scenic.
It was Watson Road. It was by Watson, it rots.
Watson Road.
It's application two zero two one dash zero zero one three S E. Watson Road.
Perfect. I make a motion to deny a rehearing.
I'll second.
We got a second.
That was.
Mike.
Mike, okay. Just, just for clarification. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion to deny? All those not in favor. Okay. All right. So.
Oh, is there still time for other business?
There is.
Yeah. The only other business I'd like to bring up is I'd like to ask if, um, of the board's feeling on this is in our definite, in our written verbiage on the website for, um, short-term rentals. I, I wish we would create some sort of a, a safe harbor clause where this can't be exclusive, but that we indicate to the people who read through the application procedure on the thing, what it is, the kinds of things we need to accept to, um, to create that five-year grandfather clause. There's nothing there. I, I did look at what we have online. And I believe that the applicant that appeared before us last week with the attorney, I do believe, I don't believe she called the planning department. I think she looked at the criteria established online. She looked at the legal criteria established in our ordinance and she didn't realize what kind of proof needed to be provided to us. And if we can't make it exclusive, because then, you know, we're creating a legal.
You can lead a horse to water, but you can't make them drink.
Right. And I'm just saying that if we gave examples on our explanations, not within the application, but in our explanation of those things. Not everybody can, can, will call the planning department.
We can clarify.
Clarify what we need.
Application that for that specific special exception that they need to provide true documentation. We can do that.
Yeah, that, that would be my suggestion.
We do talk with most of the applicants, particularly on the special exceptions and, and the short-term rentals. So.
I, I just think that would make it easier to have people coming back and forth because.
It's not staff's application. It's the applicant's application. And, and I, you know, we, we try as best we can to tell them what they need to do.
Saying if we made that a little clearer in the five-page explanation of what we're looking for online, then maybe, maybe we wouldn't have to keep sending these people back and maybe it would be easier on your office because they know what's expected of them before they fill out the application.
We can do that.
Okay. That's, that's my only suggestion. There's someplace in the verbiage that you can do that administratively. I don't think you need any of us for that.
I do have a request, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry. I do have a request.
Yes.
For the board. We're all here. I, I think the board needs to make a decision about what you want to do about Zoom. We are okay from a staff standpoint and from a, a city standpoint of continuing to do Zoom under the conditions that we basically had tonight, that you, you have to have a physical quorum of, of members. Occasionally if a member needs to be on Zoom for whatever reason, that, that's fine. We can, we can deal with that. And I, I, I guess the, the, the real question is, what do you want to do about applicants? And, you know, there's pros and cons to the Zoom, and I know it's convenient for some people. They don't have to be in town or, or whatever, but you know, eighteen months ago, that was never a consideration. It was if you were going to appear before this board, you, you came here. It, it was as simple as that. So I, I'm just asking you to make a decision. It doesn't necessarily have to be for the next meeting, but.
Now let's have a few minutes discussion. And I myself prefer the in-person because I have, myself have a hard time hearing some of these applicants speaking. It gets muffled, it gets mumbled. And number two, there's, um, things they can show us that we don't see on this screen right here. Because to me, and with my eyesight, it looks, I, I don't even bother looking because I can't see it.
Yeah.
All right. So for me.
I agree.
I agree. I think having the person in front of us to have a discussion and we can have that discussion. If it's some of them bring additional.
Right.
Handouts and stuff that aren't necessarily with the package, but they have additional information they can provide us that, they don't have the same ability. So I think it helps the applicant themselves.
It's to their advantage.
Yes.
Okay. And if that, that was, if you want that to be.
What does the board feel?
I, I agree with you, Steve.
Absolutely.
Unless something changes.
Right.
Right.
You know, I mean, all things being equal and, and the, you know, we go the way it is as we say now, it's easy for, I think it's easier for the applicant. It, it allows them to, 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 to provide supplemental information. It allows us to hear it better. We can see what, what, what's going on. Um.
You're right. If something happens, we can always revisit. I mean, that's, that's not an issue.
Always, I don't know if the applicant can, but people or Butters and stuff like that could always participate via telephone.
Uh, no.
The applicants could not.
Under, under ninety-one A, a board member could participate by.
Personal quorum.
As long as you have a physical quorum here.
Right. Okay.
And then the board could decide to, on a case-by-case basis, to allow, you know, a butter or an applicant to do, do remote. Uh, usually that was pre-arranged as opposed to. Uh, usually that was pre-arranged as opposed to, you know, on the fly. But whatever policy you want to have is fine. I just, I, I just, my reading is it's, it's time to move on and it's time to go back to.
The consensus of the board is that we, we go back to live in-person meetings.
That's fine.
We do read letters from the Butters if, if they're not here physically.
Yes.
We do read their letters.
Yeah, we do.
So we give them.
Absolutely. Uh, you're, you're right. We're.
That's going to change, so.
Right, right. We can, we, we can encourage Butters who call in.
They're in Florida in the wintertime. They send a letter, we read it.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes.
Yeah, and it goes into the records, so they still have the ability to not be here and, and.
Okay.
Violent, you know what I mean?
Voice and opinion.
And I want to add one more thing. If there's uh, about. No, never mind.
Again, under extraordinary circumstances, if a board member needed to zoom in or call in, just as we were able to do before, before COVID, but I, now we have actually better technology, but you know, that was always a possibility before COVID, still a possibility after we go back to, you know.
Yeah, and if things change.
It should be the unusual, it should be the uniqueness or the unusual as opposed to the regular. That's, that's.
Right. If this COVID situation changes, then, then sure the city will address that as it needs to.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Yay.
I need a ride home.
All right.
Michael.
Let me get you off.
Michael, I need a ride home.
I don't even know where you live.